Good morning, everyone. Welcome. Call the order to march eighth regular meeting of the Grant County Board of Commissioners. Please join us in the vicinity of the plan.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every right and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, the C.S.S. symbol of perfect friendship among our united politicians.
Thank you. Approval of the agenda is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Gila Regional Medical Center report, we have Taffy Arias CEO with us today, Richard Stokes, new CFO, if you guys could come forth.
Good morning, all. How are you? For those of you who did not make the meeting last night with the medical staff and the Board of Trustees of Gila Regional Medical Center, and I certainly do thank Commissioner Edwards for participating and being there, we really did appreciate that greatly. But it was a wonderful meeting, I thought that it was an opportunity for people to be heard, and I think it was just very positive from so many, from so many aspects. Primarily, I think, that it showed a further need for greater communication between us all, because I think we all have the same goal, and that's to provide exceptional care for, health care for people in this community and the surrounding communities for years to come. So, thank you all for the work that you're doing also in this project. First of all, I would like to read a clarifying statement, and I apologize, because sometimes when I get up here and you ask me questions, I think, "Oh, I should've said that." You know, you know what that is, when you go home and say, "Oh, I should've said that." So, I have a clarifying statement that I'd like to read regarding the partnership between U&amp;M Cancer Center and Gila Regional Cancer Center. Several stories in the media have referred to a partnership between the University of New Mexico Comprehensive Cancer Center, which is U-N-M-C-C-C, and the Cancer Center at Gila Regional Medical Center. This partnership is different from the previous engagement for oncology services. In this statement, we wish to clarify key points about the new partnership. The U&amp;M Comprehensive Cancer Center is collaborating with Gila Regional Medical Center to provide oncology clinical services in terms of a middle-level provider, medical oncologist, and radiation oncologist. Contrary to the previous contract with U&amp;M, this is our clinic. The difference is, and I'll read just a bit more with this, that this is a contracted group that is coming down, we are contracting solely with providers, but Gila Regional is managing the business of our cancer center. U&amp;M Comprehensive Cancer Center staffing model is to recruit for a full-time medical oncologist physician to be on-site five days a week. The professional services agreement with U&amp;M call for a transition period until a full-time physician was hired. As stipulated in the agreement, the transition period specified for U&amp;M CCC to provide a medical oncologist on Fridays, an additional day when possible. Please note that the previous contracted provider only provided a medical oncologist one day a week, and never had plans for a full-time oncologist. At the end of the program, they were providing greater services and more days of service, and this was a truly good thing that that previous contract did, because they wanted to make sure that the patients had up-to-date services before a lack of care during that transition period that did not occur. We have two candidates interested in the medical oncologist position at GRMC, and the first candidate has a visit scheduled here in Silver City on March 22nd, 2018. We are very, very optimistic about this. If this goes through as planned, we want to make sure that we show the very best of our city, and that is the people who live here. So, any questions about that?
Yes, I do. So, I think I heard you say that the former group, which would be New Mexico Cancer Center, was providing oncology services one day a week?
And, and more often at the end, which was several months.
Okay. Because I just want, for the record, I wanna, I've talked to Dr. McInney, Karen DeGenneby, and some others about this, and so if it was more at the end, maybe that's where I got my misinformation.
And, and it was very, very extensive services that they gave for the last few months. It was a, it was done very, very well on their part.
Okay, 'cause we were hearing two and a half days a week was what they were providing, but that was just at the end?
Right, but, but let me say, it was, when I talk about the end, I don't mean a week or two weeks, it was an extensive period of time.
Okay. And so, that, that service is what kept the appointment time, when, when a cancer patient would call in or their family and say, "When can we get in?", that appointment time was relatively short.
Correct.
And so, that, that process provided, so they said, "Okay, we'll go with, to Gila Regional."
Right.
Whereas, now, what, how long would someone have to wait to get an appointment with the cancer?
It depends on what their case is. I can tell you that if it's, if it is, if they are in remission, or they, if it's something that is not deemed emergent, that they need, that care started emergently, it could be several months out, even two months out. But they're bringing in another oncologist more often than just one day a week, but it is not regular. So, I, although the service is not where we want it to be, it will be, and it will be very soon. The radiation piece of our service will be up and going in April, and this is a fantastic part of the service that is missing. And once that is done, I, I want to reiterate with you that that service is our service, it belongs to Gila Regional Medical Center and this community, where before it was not. All of the equipment that we're getting in, we have paid for that, and we have paid upfront for it, so we don't have any debt with this equipment coming in. We are paying for it as we, as it comes in, so where it looks like business as usual from, from equipment-wise, I will tell you that the patient records are now our records. The equipment is our equipment, the service is our service, the program is our program, so that at any time we change vendors, that service would continue. Is that clear? 'Cause I wanna make sure you all understand that this is, that, all of that now belongs to us.
That's an important component.
Yes.
Excuse me.
Yes.
That I noticed in the CFO narrative, I get, I'm guessing this narrative we got is from Joe Bath?
Yes.
Okay. It's, it looks like the cancer center increased over prior month with 243 compared to 176 last month, so that's, that's good.
Yes.
It's smart, it's, that's for February, and so we're ramping up?
Yes, sir.
From when the cancer center was closed last?
July.
July.
Yes, sir.
But, when you compare that to the 849 last year, you're just what, about 15%?
Yes.
Operable from what you were?
Yes. But, once, once that radiation gets out, you're gonna see a completely different picture.
Right, okay, and I look forward to optimism with this new full-time oncologist.
Yes, I do.
I've been told over and over again that we can't support a full-time, so, but if you can hire one and put him to work, that's gonna be great for, for the cancer center.
You know, when you, when you say that, Commissioner, I do want, I do wanna stress something. You know, first of all, I am, I am so very grateful to the commissioners for allowing a time for Gila Regional to present what we see for our future in April. But with that comes growth, and we cannot, as a city, continue to not grow. We must grow. You know, there, there's a saying that change is inevitable, and those who deny change will be stagnant, and with stagnant comes complacency, and when complacency comes death. This is a vibrant community, and we must help that, and we must help when we bring providers in to let them see the very best of Silver City and the surrounding communities where we all love, and we all live in this community. So, when we bring physicians in, we have to put on our best clothes and our best faces and our best optimism, and show the pride that we have in our community. Every community has ups and downs, every community has debt, every community, nobody has enough money, right? Nobody does. But, we're growing, and we cannot afford not to grow. We cannot afford not to bring people into this community. All of the doctors that we bring in, they are not cheap, but when we say that about, is it, can we support it, we cannot not have it. We must have these services, otherwise somebody else is going to get all of the revenue that needs to come to this city.
Well, I can certainly agree with you that what we want is growth, especially at the cancer center, because we, since August, July, whatever, closed down, we've had the opposite of that.
Right.
So, I, I'd be willing to put on my best face, and I hope everyone else will, to welcome a full-time oncologist.
Yes.
It just seems like a big jump to go from one day a week to five days a week.
The patients are there, sir.
Good.
They are there.
I'm all in for that.
Yes, sir.
And, one, so, just to what you said, so we don't have to back up, the meeting last night, so, I got, I think, I got word from somewhere that that was, they were gonna, that the Board of Trustees was going immediately into an executive session, otherwise I would've been a comedian last night. Bernadette, is that correct? Did you send that communication to me?
I did give the agenda of the Board and the trustees.
It did say?
Didn't say that.
It did say that they were going to.
The trustees, the first item of business that the trustees did was donate that item and open it to them.
Okay. So, if we advertised, if the county commission advertised for a public meeting, and we get all these people here, and, and we could do that like we did today, because we didn't say we were gonna go immediately into a closed session. But if we, let's say, this meeting today, and we had advertised that we're going to immediately into a closed session, I would say that a lot of these people would've read that and decided not to come, just like I read that, and decided it would be a waste of my time to come, they're just gonna go into executive session, they're not gonna let me in there, there's gonna be nothing discussed. So, my contention is that that meeting last night, maybe you can help me out, could be, potentially be a violation of the Open Meetings Act, because it wasn't advertised as it went down. And so, you, in my opinion, the Board of Trustees limited my participation there, because they advertised the meeting in a way that it didn't go down. I certainly would've been, I regret that I missed that meeting, if I would've known there was any chance that they wouldn't have gone into executive session, I would've been. And so, I'm gonna go back and check to make sure that I'm right, that Commissioner Edwards is right, and I'm gonna go to the Board of Trustees and, and tell them how I feel about that.
All right, sir.
Because I, we can't recall that meeting, and I think it's a violation of the Open Meetings Act, and I'm not sure, I'm gonna go out on limb and say I'm not sure that's the first one that's taken place recently, so.
Mr. Chair, can I make a comment? I, I don't think we're in the position to be stating that somebody did anything illegal or anything, any wrongdoings at this point, unless there's some kind of attorney involved, so I, that part I think we need to scratch, 'cause that's not the way the commission feels.
Mr. Chair, I was going to say, I believe they record those meetings, so it, it may be possible for us to request a recording if that's available.
Okay, okay, I'll, I'll use the, the Mr. Ross.
All right. And I do apologize if there was any confusion on it. I know that two commissioners were at the noon meeting, and that was greatly appreciated. And in that, I know that in that notice for the noon meeting, it did say that, I believe it was in a closed session, the one at night, I'm not, I know it did say that they were going into executive, but I believe that on the agenda, it was opened up, and I have to go back.
Would you please, the Board of Trustees, read the, the legal notice? Thank you. Legal notice, a meeting of the Gila Regional Medical Center Board of Trustees and local physicians is scheduled for Wednesday, March 7th, 2018, at 6:30 PM at the Southwest Bone and Drug Institute. Here's the address. The Board will immediately go into executive session for the purpose of discussing the hospital's strategic plan. Following the executive session, there will be public comment and discussion. Thank you.
Is there anything else, sir?
I don't know.
Okay, very good. And so, do you have any other questions, Stephanie, before I turn it over to Richard? No? Okay, thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Good morning. I'm really happy to be here. On a personal note, I did complete my move from Texas yesterday, so now I'm a resident of Grant County, and glad to be here. Thank you.
A taxpayer.
Okay, so, I'm gonna go over the, the summary statistics. For the month of January, we had 210 admissions, that was 30 admissions above 2017, and above budget of 197. Outpatient visits, we had 3,742 outpatient visits compared to 3986 last year, but we did exceed budget on that line item of $3,400. Emergency room visits, we had 1,452, that's 110 above last year, and exceeded our budget of 1,375. Total surgeries for the month was 416, that was 78 surgeries above January of last year, and also above our budget of 361. Patient revenue for the month was $17,891,000, that was $439,000 higher than last fiscal year, January. A little bit below budget of $18,234. Excess revenue over expenses or, or profit this year, this, January was $202,000 versus a loss of 300, and, right at $309,000 last January, which brings our year-to-date loss to $4.2 million versus a year-to-date loss of 17, of $6.2 million. So, a little bit, a little better than $2 million improvement over the last 12 months. Cash ended the month of January at 43.3 days versus 76.8 days last January. Now, since I've been here about a month now, slightly over a month, I've been really taking a look, Joe Bath has been helping us with special projects and handling some of the day-to-day financial activity. What I've been doing for the last 30 days is really taking a deep look into the revenue cycle of Gila Regional. You know, it's my, it's primarily my responsibility to have a smooth operating revenue cycle. So, having said that, you know, my goal over the next 30 days is to initiate some actions to increase net revenue, which will increase cash flowing into the operations. We have, we have performed a study of our supply cost at the hospital, we spend about a, our, our target is to reduce supply costs by $100 per patient day, to hit some benchmarks, this, this, some industry benchmarks. We're also, are initiating, we started Monday initiating a, a optimization review of the computer system at Gila Regional. We, we've been live on this version for about eight months, and about eight months, between six and eight months is the, is the right time to, to bring somebody in to look at how the system was built and how data flows through the system. We know, we know that there's problems within how data flows through the revenue cycle part of the operations on the clinical side, the data, data seems to have, to flow pretty good there, but on the revenue cycle, we've got some issues. So, that project actually started Monday, and that's gonna take about three to four weeks to give us a solid roadmap for us to make improvements on how the information goes. We do have, and we are developing benchmarks in the revenue cycle to hit each month, and we'll be putting those down on paper in the next 30 days as well. So, any questions for me?
Any questions? Yes, Mr. Bath.
All right. Yeah, thank you very much, presentation. My first is about terminology, and since I've hopefully been hearing from you for quite a while, I wanna understand the terms you use. You mentioned the lost year-to-date?
Yes, sir.
And then you mentioned the previous 12 months, and I'm wondering if, when you say year-to-date, do you mean the prior 12-month period?
Yes, a, a year-to-date, not prior 12 months, but from the beginning of the fiscal year through that, in this case, January.
And that's how I would use year-to-date?
Yes, sir.
Not the previous 12 months necessarily?
Yeah.
Okay, so, starting July 1 through the end of February, assume?
Oh, January, in this case.
In this case, the end of January?
Yes.
Okay. And you discussed the supply cost benchmark?
Yes, sir.
I'm curious whether that benchmark, is it adjusted for the fact that we're a small rural hospital, and presumably don't have the scale that a large hospital has?
Yes, you know, whenever you get a bench, industry benchmark, they, you know, they benchmark it in several ways. One, of course, is bed size, the other is based on gross revenue, and the other, and there's another, another way. Those are generally the two.
Okay, so, transport costs wouldn't necessarily figure if I'd be more rural?
Uh, well, uh, that's the third one. So, you have urban and rural. So, we, the company that we're using specializes and heavily is concentrated in rural health care, which is one of the reasons why we use them, 'cause they understand our business.
So, this is an appropriate benchmark?
Oh, yes.
That's great. I, I would look forward to hearing more about those efforts, that's, that's excellent. And I wanted to ask, if you could say who it is that is doing the evaluation of the implementation of Meditech 6?
Okay, so, I know, in, to give you a little bit of history, when I first got here, I started asking questions, you know, who, who is doing what work, and so, you know, to date, we had taken more of a targeted approach to fixing a targeted item. In the past, I have used a company called Navin Hapty. Now, Navin Hapty only works with Meditech hospitals, they don't work with Cerner, or McKesson, or CPSI, or any of the other hospitals, so they're, they are experts in how Meditech should run. So, what Navin Hapty is doing for us right now is obviously giving us an umbrella look at the entire revenue cycle. Now, moving forward, you know, we will use them to look on the clinical side of the house, because, you know, let's face it, finance is a service arm to the clinical side of the operations, and that's how we view ourselves. So, so, but right now, because we need to increase cash flow, and we need to improve the impact to net revenue, I felt it was more appropriate to start with the revenue cycle. So, Navin Hapty has deep experience, they, they understand how Meditech should work versus how it is working.
That's, that's great, thank you very much, and I look forward to more updates.
Thank you, sir.
So, Mr. Ross, thank you very much for that report, which is really, really nice to hear, a report that is understandable and clear, and hearing that you're talking about setting benchmarks and, and things like that is quite, quite refreshing, let me say. So, one of the things that I have been hearing about the Meditech system is, and I'm sure you have heard many stories about, many probably gory stories about the whole Meditech fiasco, but one of the things that keeps coming up is that after investing all that money in Meditech, that our current system cannot be updated any other way other than custom. Is that true?
Oh, other than buy, custom?
Customizing, I think you said.
Customizing, yeah, well, okay, so, so, yes, so typically, software has, you know, new iterations, so if this is Meditech 6, eventually there's gonna be Meditech 7.
Right.
So, can we update to Meditech 7 without a repeat of what has happened in the past?
Yeah, for instance, and I understand, and I, I have run into the same stories, you know, when I first got there, you know, it was meditate this and meditate that, well, you know, Meditech is used in hospitals all the way down to 10, 10 beds, all the way up to 500-bed hospitals. So, Meditech works if it's, if it's built correctly. So, what we have here, I'm, you know, the first week, I, I knew without even looking into it very hard, that there were issues with the build of Meditech, and so, which is why I reached out to Navin Hapty and started this process. And I actually used Navin Hapty in South Carolina, I brought them in six months after we went live to do exactly what we're gonna do here, and they made significant improvements in a short period of time. But to answer your question, as long as, we have a release for Meditech that's, that's available to us now, that we have not installed, so when I get back to the hospital, I'll start having discussions about, you know, upgrading to 6.1, 6.5. So, you know, to answer your question, yes, it is updatable, as Meditech releases updates. Now, you may have, here's the real rub, so, Meditech 6, 6.0 was a hybrid version, new, part new, part old. Meditech 6.1 is generally new code written in the last five years. So, you know, when you go to 6.0, the 6X platform is gonna be with Meditech for at least a decade before they move to a completely rewritten program. But as it exists today, we can, as long as we have sufficient hardware, we can do the updates. And I would not expect a major change in Meditech for at least a decade, that would repeat what you just experienced.
Appreciate that clarification, thank you.
Yes, sir, yes, ma'am.
Any other questions?
I, I do have one other thing I'd like to share with you, if that's all right. So, I want him to read one more time, because there was, not everyone was looking at this when he read it, but January of 2017.
Yeah, we talked about this. So, yeah, January of 17, the hospital had a $308,830,000 loss, and January of this year, we had a $202,085 profit, so it's about a $510,000 swing.
Right. Now, what I'd like to bring, to point on this, is that in January 2017, our cancer center was running full, correct? All right. What I'd like for you to understand is that during that timeframe, monies were not coming to our hospital. Now, we are doing the billing, now we are doing the collections for this, okay? We pay for a service, contracted physicians to come down, but that money is being funneled back to the hospital, to this community, to reinvest in the hospital. So, these type, although I know it's very, very tempting to look at a, a broad topic and make assumptions about a broad topic, when you really dive into the detail of it, which is not a burden you should have to have, that's our burden, right? That's our burden to do that. But when you dive down into it, and you start tweezing out the pieces of the business of health care, no matter if it's a service line, a physician's practice, it's products that we're buying, when you drill down to it, that's when you start making the we're buying, when you drill down to it, that's when you start making the significant changes that need to be made. I wish that history were different because history is froth with error. History is froth with, with mistakes for all of us. The issue is, is that when we continue making the same mistake based on assumptions, not fact, then that's when we're in a, we're in a heap of trouble. But when we make mistakes, we understand the mistakes and we learn from those mistakes so that we do not repeat it. That's where growth is. And our hospital is in the growth mode and we will stay that way because that's our business.
Any other questions?
Uh, I could just have one more comment. Um, I appreciate, uh, your comments about growth. Um, and, uh, I, I would just say that the report that we got today, let's just talk about the, the report that we got today between the two of you, is probably more information than we got from the hospital in the first, I don't know, eight or nine months that I was a commissioner. And, um, I would encourage you, and so one of the things you just said is, you know, diving down into the weeds is our business. I agree with that. But part of what happens in communities and in communication is when there is no communication, assumptions happen by nature. And, um, I think that, I think that I can speak, um, for all the commissioners, we want more information. We need more information. And so, um, going a little bit more into depth, such as what you have done today, is important to us and I think that is very important in keeping the lines of communication open between the hospital and commissioners.
And Commissioner Edwards, I totally agree with you and I will tell you that the first, the first seven months of my, uh, tenure here, I can tell you has been a little bit on the rough, rough side, right? And so it takes a while to understand how everything works. It takes a while when you, when you see something that normally is not there and you look at it like, can someone explain this to me? Because this is not how businesses function. And then to gra, to understand it and to put your arms around it and then to attack it and fix it, that takes a while. And as you know, things have not been smooth sailing and we, we are on that path now. I think that the recent, most recent meetings that the board and we as a leadership team have had with commissioners, you, you can't erase the past. But I think that if we're all in alignment and we are all appreciative of the jobs that we all do and the tremendous responsibility, not just what Richard and I have, but what you as commissioners have, as long as we have that deep appreciation of that great responsibility and we do communicate, I think that we can make something so glorious, so glorious. But when we don't, when we pull it in and we isolate ourselves and silo ourselves, that's when we start cracking, right?
Absolutely. And I do appreciate, having been there myself, how hard it is to step into what you did, so, absolutely.
But it's okay. Look, I'm alive.
Yes, you are.
Dan? Am I not alive, Dan?
Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you all so very much.
I want to thank you also for your report. I think it was, we did get a lot of information. I appreciate the explanation on the, uh, the last explanation you did on the income. Much appreciated.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, so we've got to get, uh, we want these guys to get back to, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
So here's your, uh, cast and has, uh, regular.
Can we go ahead and amend the agenda to move item E up before public input? Because I know these guys are testing today, they need to get back to school.
Is that a question?
A second.
Uh, all of them?
Aye.
So, uh, we'll go ahead and amend the agenda, uh, and, uh, ask, uh, Coach Alvarado to come up to see. We amended the agenda so you guys could get back to school.
Mr. Chairman, you're back to class, right? Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to request the honor to go and read the proclamation.
Uh, yes, sir.
Go ahead.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Grant County Proclamation. Whereas the governing body of the Grant County, of the County of Grants, having learned of the accomplishments of the Silver High School Wrestling Team, does hereby extend its recognition. And whereas the Silver High School Fighting Cult Wrestling Team won the Class A dash four-eight state championship, finishing the two thousand eighteen state championship tournament with two-hundred-and-seventy points. And whereas the Silver High School Wrestling Team is coached by Luis Alvarado and assistant from Juan Carlos Minus and Jacob Vega. And when I say your name, can you please stand? And whereas Vince Marine, sophomore, hundred-and-six pounds, Zeke Marcus Junior, hundred-and-twenty-six pounds, Michael Aguirre the Third, sophomore, hundred-and-fifty-two-pound class, and Benny Vega Senior, hundred-and-eighty-two-pound class, captured the individual state championship titles. And whereas Jaden Whitholzer, Senior, hundred-and-forty-five-pound, Ramon Rodriguez, Senior, hundred-and-sixty, hundred-and-sixty-pound, Isaiah Sanchez Junior, two-hundred-and-twenty-pound, and Benito Sierra, Sierra, a Senior, two-hundred-and-eighty-five-pound class, was able to take second place. And whereas Brendan Olson, Damian Marcus, Nathaniel Lucero, Ian Blyons took third place in the respective weight classes. And whereas Christopher Jaden Rodriguez making the consolation semifinals, excuse me. And now therefore, the governing body of the County of Grant extends congratulations and recognition to the Silver High School Wrestling Team for their outstanding athletic accomplishments and exemplary sportsmanship. Done this eighth day of March two thousand eighteen in Silver City, Grant County, New Mexico. I'd also like to mention that, uh, I believe Coach Alvarado got, uh, Coach of the Year. His dad told me that yesterday and he's very proud and, and we're proud to have you, Coach.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the proclamation.
Second. All of them?
Aye.
Aye. Proclamation approved. Uh, Mr. Alvarado?
Uh, sorry.
Alvarado, is there something that you'd like to say?
I have just a few things to go ahead and say. Once again, just thanks for recognizing our team here again. Um, I have, uh, three things to go ahead and say is first, this team, um, set a, three score records this year, um, at, at the state tournament. The first was having thirteen out of the fourteen wrestlers in the semifinals. Um, our second record was that we had thirty-five overall pins within the two days. And then our third is that we scored two-hundred-and-seventy points, which was ninety-four points better than our competitors over the weekend. Um, there, there's not enough words I can say about these young men. Um, overall, they, they make our coaching staff, this year they made our coaching staff look a lot better than what we really are and probably even a lot smarter. Um, great, great group of young kids. They work hard in and out of the classroom and it's just a great representation of our community and then all the support that we get from our community over, over the years that I've been here at Silver High.
Thank you. Coach, would you like to say something?
I think, uh, Coach Alvarado's being very humble, but, uh, I think this is what your fourth state championship that you've won under your?
Yes, sir, this is our fourth.
Great, and this was a repeat, correct?
Yes, and then, well, that was the other, the other, uh, first back-to-back. Somewhere along the way, we've never been able to, we always kind of fall under, can't get that back-to-back and that's, you know, another part that we were able to accomplish this year as well.
Well, I, I would like to tell these, these young gentlemen that, uh, take this experience with you wherever you go and the dedication that you have to wrestling, apply that to everyday life because that, that's going to make you who you are. And, uh, work hard no matter what you do and congratulations to you.
Thank you, sir. Would you guys honor us with a picture?
Yes, sir.
So I guess I'll announce it to the world.
What's that?
This is the position. Okay, thanks. Thanks again. Uh, this time, uh, the commissioner stands for public input. Uh, yes, sir. Right on the other.
Good morning, Chairman Billings, Commissioners.
Can you push the button, please?
Thank you, Peter.
Tell me what color that button is so I can tell people.
It's white to start with.
Yeah, it's kind of translucent white.
Oh, yeah, thank you. Thank you, go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, good morning, Chairman Billings, Commissioners, uh, staff. Uh, my name is Nick Cicillo and I'm a former Air Force officer as well as a resident of Grant County for, uh, nine years. For today's purposes of my discussing the Holloman proposal for F-16 overflights, I have two relevant experiences I'd like to share with you. Um, first, as a former naval, uh, rather, Air Force officer, I did serve thirteen years civil service in the Navy. Um, I have two, uh, experiences as assigned to Air Nautical Systems Division at Wright-Patterson Air Force Base in Dayton, Ohio, from sixty-eight to seventy-two during the Vietnam War. Um, second, as a volunteer for the city, Silver City Fire Department from two thousand and thirteen to two thousand and fifteen, I assisted in the development of a draft community wildfire, uh, protection plan for Silver City and the ETZ. These experiences have led me to believe that it's okay to say no to the Holloman proposal. Here's why. As an Air Force officer, part of my job was to record flight test data for the evaluation of new airborne systems and to listen feedback on performance from flight crews. In doing this, I flew over thirty missions in four years with the training crews of Tactical Air Command's Training Squadron at Lockport Air Force Base, uh, north of Dayton in Columbus, Ohio. What I learned that, was that training is not only important, it's essential. It prepares flight crews to know how to do their jobs well and to stay combat-ready. At the same time, there are appropriate areas over which to conduct combat training, but not over town, county, forest, and wilderness. The use of flares as proposed by Holloman is an important countermeasure against enemy infrared missiles, but the use of them over the Hila seems to fly in the face of the following: the dryness of our weather and the fire vulnerability of our vegetation. The two thousand and twelve Whitewater Baldi Fire setting a state record that burned nearly three hundred thousand acres in the Hila. And accidents with flares can occur resulting in ground fire. If we oppose the Holloman proposal, some may see this as being unpatriotic. I understand that. However, I would offer the following. First, the potential price to our county, in my opinion, is too high, as outlined both in Mayor Aladdin's October letter to Holloman and in other testimony. And second, since Holloman has another option called Alternative One, then I believe that our responsible position is to say, we support F-16 training, but not here. It's okay to say no and still be patriotic. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have a problem coming? Yes.
There I am, on my tippy toes again. Um, hello to the Commission. My name is Patrice Metchman. Um, I live in Hila Hot Springs. I drove in this morning to participate in, uh, in the meetings today and, um, particularly the one o'clock meeting at, uh, the county convention. But since I drove all that way, I figured I'd, uh, take up some airspace right here, right now. I just wanted to really just take this moment to thank the Commission, uh, for its work. I really appreciate particularly, um, all the Commissioners, but, um, especially my own Commissioner, who has been so open, uh, to listening to all the issues. And I think that is really, uh, really important for the rest of the community to know that the Commissioners have been listening and have an open-door policy. So I really appreciate that. I think that, um, uh, the Chairman and the other Commissioners, uh, were, uh, instrumental in making the meeting this afternoon public and that's the way it should be. And I'm, uh, again, very thankful to the Commission for doing that. I wanted to just say that, again, uh, I spoke at the first, uh, time we had the special meeting, uh, with, uh, Mr. Schaefer and, um, my sentiment is the same now as it was then. I think that this is something, uh, that, uh, we as a community should come together on. I think that the Commissioners have an opportunity, uh, to make a statement together. I know that the resolution was brought up in a work session and I was so pleased to see that. I know that we're sort of on a rocky path right now in terms of so much going on. It may be hard to think about, uh, coming to agreement on something, but I, I really do believe that all the Commissioners have the health and safety, uh, of the community foremost in their mind. And I believe all the Commissioners, uh, want what's best for Grant County and believe in our economic vitality. So I think that it might be possible at some point, uh, for, for you to find a way to address, uh, what is common among you and, uh, to then articulate those concerns in some sort of statement, uh, as a resolution, uh, as a letter, uh, to let the, our Air Force and the delegation know, uh, that you support the economic well-being of Grant County and to also articulate your particular concerns about the Holloman flyover. And then lastly, I wanted to say that, um, I read the, uh, the newspaper and the comments that the Commissioners made and I think that they were all very, very thoughtful. And I just want to point one, point out to one thing again, and that is the idea that the, that the county Commissioner's voice won't matter, uh, in an eventual decision by the Air Force. Uh, what was, what was stated was that the Air Force will do what it wants and that the county Commissioners, uh, were too weak or had not enough influence to affect what the Air Force does. And I think that might be true, except that you do have influence, uh, with our delegations and they do, uh, listen to what the Commissioners think and how they feel and what the community wants. And those, uh, delegation members- And those delegation members, as one of the commissioners pointed out, do have influence over what the Air Force does. So I would just urge you to continue to work together to articulate our concerns. And again, thank you for making the meeting public this afternoon, and we'll see you there.
Thank you. I forgot to mention previously that there is a we'd like to stick the light there just for, to be courteous, I'd like to let you know that now.
Commissioners, staff. My name's Peter Russell, and I'm here to talk to you about the Holloman proposal. I've lived here 37 years. Most of you know me. I do have some concerns about the proposal, and specifically about noise. As you know, Holloman proposes to create a military operations area near Silver City. They've issued a map. If you look at it, there's not very much detail, but it is near Silver City, that's for sure. That's about all you can tell from the map. However, they have announced that it would have 10,000 sorties, 10% at night, 10% supersonic, with a flight floor of 500 feet above the ground level. So I'm here to talk about noise. How loud is an F-16 which can fly 1,500 miles per hour? And the answer is, at 500 feet above ground level, at 500 miles an hour, a person will hear a noise of 103 decibels. That's documented in the Kent Nellis EIS and the Gandy EIS up in Utah. How loud is 103 decibels? On the second page, you have a little scale that shows decibels. And on the left-hand side, you'll see some examples of decibel sounds. A fire alarm is about 100 decibels. Other scales might give you a locomotive, or they might give you a jackhammer. It's a very loud noise. It's 30 times a day and three times at night. So it's a noise that comes at irregular intervals. You don't know when it's going to come. It jolks you every single time you hear it. It is an annoying sound. It's a disturbing sound, and it has debilitating effects over time in terms of hypertension, disorders of the nervous system, sleep disturbance, et cetera. At the last commission meeting where the Air Force attended, members of, or citizens from Alamogordo came up and said, "Oh, it's not a big deal. F-16 noise doesn't last a long time. It's fun to watch the jets take off." The Air Force representatives will also tell you the F-16 noise doesn't last a long time. If you average it out with all the ambient sounds over a 24-hour period, it doesn't raise the ambient background sound very much. But the average background sound is not something you hear. What you hear is every single individual event. You will hear every one of those fire alarm overflights, 103 decibels. The noise doesn't last that long, but you'll hear it 30 times a day. Gunshot noise doesn't last very long either, but when it's in your yard, it gets your attention. Supersonic flights, 120 to 130 decibels. 130 decibels is the logarithmic scale. It's about eight times louder than the 500-foot, 500-mile-an-hour flight. This is what the Air Force has to say about supersonic flights. "Air Force procedures require that whenever possible, flights be over open water above 10,000 feet and no closer than 15 miles from shore. Supersonic operations over land must be conducted over 30,000 feet or when below 30,000 feet in specially designated areas approved by Headquarters, United States Air Force, Washington DC." Well, that would be us, the Lobo MOA. You look at the picture. It's kind of featureless, kind of barren, empty. Maybe there's some people living near Silver City, but no commercial airlines routes. Looks like a great place for an MOA. It's all the Air Force seems to know about this area, and its representatives seem to have no idea what's at risk. On the Heel River, right here, this last picture, that's in the middle of the MOA. It's beautiful, quiet, maybe 20 decibel levels. Imagine 30 500-foot, 500-mile-an-hour flights going over it every single day. It's a spoiler. And along the river, there are farms, there's ranches, there's small towns. It's a beautiful, quiet area. It's our job to tell the Air Force what's here. It's our job to fill out the picture that they have. It's our job to tell them that there are no economic benefits to Grant County, just harms. More fires, declining property values, lots of noise. Alamogordo benefits, Santa Fe benefits, Grant County, Silver City do not. Tell Holloman that we're worried about these problems. They won't worry about them unless we tell them. You are our representatives. Please tell them.
Good morning. Good morning Chairman Billings and members of the commission. I'm Allison Civic, Executive Director of the Hila Resources Information Project and the Hila Conservation Coalition. I'd like to thank you commissioners and express our sincere appreciation for your pushback against the Lieutenant Governor's attempts to organize a closed invite-only meeting to somehow negotiate aspects of the Holloman Air Force Base proposal for F-16s over the Hila. Unfortunately, the information that came from the Lieutenant Governor was inaccurate. The Air Force has not made a decision yet on its expanded airspace at Holloman. They're in the early stages of developing a draft environmental impact statement under the National Environmental Policy Act, or NEPA. This is a step in the process where issues are identified, including community opposition. And the Air Force right now is collecting information on the pros and cons of alternatives, costs, benefits, and environmental, economic, and social impacts. So F-16 flyovers over the Hila are not a done deal, and it would be inappropriate, if not illegal, for the Air Force to make an early decision or to only truly consider one alternative at this early stage. And from our perspective, it would be naive to trust the Air Force enough to negotiate. We would be at a huge disadvantage to compromise, as the Lieutenant Governor suggests, since we have little information on the alternatives the Air Force has publicly proposed. And of course, given that Grant County was left out of the NEPA scoping process, we need to make sure that the Air Force and other political leaders guarantee that all voices are heard now as part of formal NEPA and not be limited by setting up an undemocratic process and leave us out of this critical decision. As you heard described in more detail at the work session on Tuesday, this is the time when the Air Force is gathering input and information on their alternatives. And then agencies rarely, if ever, change their minds once the draft EIS is publicly released and the preferred alternative is identified. So now is the time for all of us to make our thoughts known on Holloman's alternatives. We need to make it very clear that there are huge potential impacts from F-16 flyovers if it were to be implemented here in Grant County. Noise, wildfire risk, impacts to our peace and quiet solitude, outdoor recreation, all of these add up to major impacts on our local economy that we can't afford. We understand the Air Force's need for F-16 training. That training will happen somewhere, but we don't want it to happen over the nation's first wilderness area in Silver City. It will be detrimental to us, to our community. And I thank you again commissioners, really, I'm so appreciative for defending our community's right to participate and speak on this issue. Thank you.
Oh, no, sorry. You can go next, though.
Apologies if I skipped in line here. I also appreciate that you gave me a few minutes to speak. I just wanted to introduce myself. I've recently come to Silver City, recently moved here. I'm Susan Beck, and I'm a retired Air Force colonel. And I worked not only in air operations, so I understand what's going on with Holloman, but also at the highest levels of the Air Force, twice in the Secretary of the Air Force's office. So I'm willingly offering myself to support the efforts of the commission as well as the other organizations in this city and also in the county to having Holloman look at other options. So I just wanted to kind of make my presence known and just let you know that I truly support the efforts that the commission is taking and also that other organizations here in town are taking. And if there's any way that you can think of that I can support you with the expertise that I've had for my 24 years in service, I'm willing to get involved and support Holloman moving away from this option and taking a look at other options. You know, again, I could really see myself not only working with the commission, but also in supporting the efforts and I want you to know of other organizations here. I want you to know that I am meeting with Allison right after this meeting, and I am trying to get myself as up to speed as I can on what's happened so far and looking toward a strategy that we can really take, we can really put into action to help Holloman move away from this option and come up with something that will be a win-win for both. So just wanted to introduce myself. And again, I wanted to thank you also for the efforts that you've taken so far. And I know that working together, we can help this come to a good resolution. So thank you very much. I will be happy to do that. And I can also send you some other information that might be of interest. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Lorna Rubelman, formerly known as Lorna Wilkes-Rubelman. My husband at the time was a flight surgeon in Pensacola several years ago, before my children were born. And so I'd like to tell you that and my membership of this community in retirement comes from public administration. I have, my terminal degree is in public administration and organizational development. And although I'm retired, I think I know most of you in that capacity. I just couldn't give it up. And so my volunteer and service work have been in that area. And I too want to thank you very much because, as we know, and we've learned, and I've learned it in my previous jobs, and you as my friends and elected representatives know and have learned, and I've watched it here, how important it is that we include all of the stakeholders and open the meetings to the public and include all of the stakeholders in open meetings. And you have done that remarkably with this issue. And I too want to have my appreciation known by you all. And I would also like to, I didn't realize that Richard and Taffy, my new neighbor, were going to be here today. And I didn't really plan on commenting on the Hila Regional Medical Center, but I think they are planning out too. That it is important that they not only include you, the elected officials, in their decisions, but to include the community that is affected and cares so much for our hospital, our health, and our very lives here, which we love. Thank you very much.
I think there's some interest in changing the agenda again. Would you make the motion?
Yes, we move Agenda Item F, pass to public input. So again, students can return. The more important task would be to speak.
Second. All in favor? Agenda Item Number F, or approver is approved. Proclamation proclaiming March 21st, 2018 to be Grant County DWI Prevention Program and Aldo Leopold Charter School Kick Butt Day. Cindy Blatt?
Good morning, gentlemen. Thank you for having us.
I'd like to introduce Linda Marcus, who's the DWI Program Preventionist, Amanda Hutchinson, who is working with us as an intern from WNMU's Social Work Program this semester. So to explain just real quickly what Kick Butt Day is, it's an annual event that empowers, it's a method by which youth are empowered to speak up against big tobacco. This year, we asked Mrs. Henigan's health class, two health classes, to work with us to do this. And so we're going to be doing two, they're going to be doing two different events. Each class chose something different. So one of the items they're going to be doing is called "Billions of Butts." Nice and worded for. So they're going to go around and they're going to pick up the butts that are under. We always see that nasty trash, right? We see people throwing them out the window like it's not trash, like it's okay to do that. So they're going to collect them, and we'll be taking pictures. And we do send this stuff into the Kick Butts website. So it'll all be on there, what we've done. The second one is called "The Airing Tobacco's Dirty Laundry." So they'll be putting up like a clothesline. The kids, the students have chosen quotes and different facts, and it'll be a clothesline on there. The county has graciously agreed to allow us to put one of the laundry here. We'll be at Silver Healthcare Family Clinic at Aldo and two locations at WNMU. CBS is also going to be working with us to do some items because they have chosen not to sell cigarettes, not to sell tobacco products. So we're very excited that Aldo worked with us this year. And anybody else need something? And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, would you, how about picture taken? Oh, yeah. Who'd like to read that? Okay, thank you.
I think I'm going to nominate you guys now from now on.
Grant County Proclamation. Whereas the annual healthcare expenditures for private and public health systems is $170 billion. And whereas 95% of adult smokers started before the age of 21. And whereas 28% of deaths in New Mexico are attributable to smoking. And whereas, according to the 2015 New Mexico Youth Risk and Resiliency Survey, 49.6% of Grant County students in grades 9 through 12 used tobacco products. And whereas 234 Grant County residents died due to smoking-related illnesses from 2012 to 2016. And whereas each day, 580 kids become regular daily smokers. And whereas 5.6 million kids under 18 alive today will ultimately die from smoking unless smoking rates decline. And whereas tobacco causes 1 in 10 deaths among adults each year, that is in excess of 7 million deaths each year. Now therefore, the Grant County Board of Commissioners of the State of New Mexico do hereby proclaim March 21, 2018 to be Grant County DWI Prevention Program and Aldo Leopold Charter School Kick Butts Day. Done as eighth day of March 2018 in Silver City.
Is there a motion to approve the proclamation?
So move.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Great work, man. Good job.
All in favor?
Aye.
Proclamation passed. Does anyone else want to speak? Would you have your picture taken with us as we present it? Would you have your picture taken with us as we present that?
(inaudible).
I need some sort of hand holders for the, you guys might just put the kids down on the air now so that we can have the slide actually.
No, just around there.
Thank you guys. Thank you guys for all your, thank you.
Have Dan give us presentation so he can go first?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I mean, yes.
So is item G next?
Okay, thanks. That's you, Dan. Could you go ahead and go?
Aye.
We want to get you back to school too.
Thank you. Absolutely.
Good morning, Commissioners, and thank you for the opportunity to provide an update on three different topics. I know the agenda had two on there, but there's a really important one that I would like to share with the Commission as well. I'm going to go ahead and start with the senior center update. As everybody's aware, we've been working closely with the county and county manager Charlie Webb for the transition of the senior centers back July 1st of 2017. And so we want to give you an update on the status of that program. Obviously, there were some concerns about funding and moving responsibility at the state level. Those things were mitigated by lots of hard work by people at HMS as well as our legislators. So that is extremely appreciated. The primary focus for HMS in regards to the senior centers for this last seven months or so has been to make sure that we get the facilities, which are the Grant County facilities, up to AAA standards. Since when they came in, they did find some opportunities. And the way we shaped our agreements with the county is that HMS put forward a significant amount of financial risk on us to get those facilities up and we were proud and happy to do so. So we're continuing to work on that. And the reason I'm bringing that up is because there's been a lot of requests from our community to implement more social programs for the seniors. And we've made a strategic decision to be sure and get the facilities up to speed and up to standard for the AAA before we move too quickly in the social programs. Additionally, I want to give you some updates on the three services that senior services provide, which are congregate mails, transportation, and home-delivered mails. The congregate mails are less than our contract with the AAA, which means that if we don't hit those numbers, there's a chance that they'll reduce our budget next year. However, having said that, we've doubled the mail, the congregate mails at the senior centers since we took them over. Every month, we've doubled those numbers. So it's headed in the right direction. We're just not quite there yet. In regards to home-delivered mails, we're exceeding our contract, meaning we're delivering more home-delivered mails than our contract is reimbursing us for. So those extra mails are being paid for by HMS. Transportation is also exceeding contract. We have greater demand for transportation than what our contract allows for. And because of that, we did submit a grant with Freeport-Mackinnon regarding a community investment grant application and hope that we can get some funding to support that additional The report I'm waiting for that I'm supposed to get actually at the end of today is the financial impact that the senior centers have had on HMS for all, from the over expenditures. And I'd be happy to share that with you next month if that's something you think would be of interest. But we obviously have to keep our board of directors up to date on that on an ongoing basis. And then finally, Ms. Edith Lee, our Chief Support Officer, who oversees the senior centers, wanted to acknowledge and thank Commissioner Edwards for the work that they're doing together in implementing the intergenerational garden. So thank you for that. So that is a social program. And even though we're being cautious not to move too fast on those, we do, we are moving forward on some of those. And I guess I will just say, do you have any questions on the senior center before I move to the next topic?
So you don't have a, you don't have a good idea for what cost HMS has incurred at this point? You'll have that later?
No, our projections are going to be approximately $50,000 over AAA budget for the year, but I'd be happy to share that number with the Commission next month.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
So any further, just go ahead.
So I would just like to say again, I've told you this before, and I'll say it again, thank you so much for HMS partnership with the county on senior centers. Really, really appreciate your commitment to that program.
Absolutely. And it's our honor and we're really, we're really feeling like we're making a big difference not only on the senior center program, but we are seeing where our seniors are coming to HMS for comprehensive healthcare. So that was obviously something that we wanted to see. So thank you. The next topic I want to share with you before I do the Tucasa update, you may have picked it up in some of the press releases we've put out. Dr. Bowen and I have been working very, very hard to work with the Human Services Department, specifically the Mental Health Division of HSD, to implement a state program called Health Homes, or as named by the state is Care Elite New Mexico. Care Elite New Mexico is a care coordination program that will be funded by the Medicaid funding at the state level. Historically, the insurance companies receive Medicaid funding to help our patients coordinate their care between medical care and behavioral health care. So we are now, we were now selected just recently, within the last two weeks, as one of seven organizations in the state to become a Care Elite New Mexico Health Home. What that means is we'll be able to help the identified number of residents in Grant County and Hidalgo County, which the number is 2,000 individuals, who have a combination of chronic health conditions and severe mental illness. And that, those are the individuals that will be helped by this program. And so we received state funding that'll come into our community to help them get the care that they need on an ongoing basis. And it's, it's going to be a two-year program. Economically, what that means is another 20 jobs are going to be coming into our communities to support that.
Did you say 2,000?
2,000.
As a combination of chronic health and mental health issues?
As severe mental health illness. But these are, I'm sorry.
Grant and Hidalgo.
Correct, with most of them being here in Grant County. And these are individuals that are identified by the state through their data that they utilize based on funds that they use to pay for these individuals. So it's obviously significant and there's a big need there. So again, I just want to share that update. This is really a good thing for our community. It's a good thing for HMS. And we were selected because we have been one of the organizations that's taken the lead on the behavioral health side, as you know, ever since the transition with La Frontera several years ago. And the final update I want to provide is regarding the Tucasa Substance Abuse Facility. As you know, the, I think the facility is just about completed and now we obviously have been working hard to get our system up and running in preparation for opening. And the original opening date was April 1st. We were notified about two to three weeks ago, I believe it was, by the Department of Health that they will not be able to give us our license until June 1st. And that June 1st license is the trigger for lots of other, you know, we've got to get our business license, we have to get our operating license, we have to get our license with the, with HERSA, Health Forces Service Administration. For our new opening target date is July 1st. I know that's not the best of news as it relates to getting that program up and running, but that's looking like where we are right now. We'll continue to update, update everyone on that. I do want to stress that, or let me say one more thing before I come to my final point on that. A big part of the challenge for HMS has been able to get funding from the state as it relates to the social detox portion of the services that are to be provided there. But I am happy to say that the governor did sign Senate Bill 220, which was sponsored by Senator Payton, which was taking the current crisis triage center legislation and rewording it so that Tucasa would qualify as a, getting reimbursed for that critical or CTC service. And again, of course, with a lot of legislative work went into that by our local legislators and as well as folks from HMS, but that will give us that additional reimbursement that we need on the front end of those services going to be offered at Tucasa. And then the final thing that I wanted to share, this is what we consider the biggest risk for a timely opening of Tucasa, and that is staffing of qualified medical professionals. The total number of employees that are needed to run that facility under the 24-hour, seven days a week facility is 31. We need 21 of those positions to safely open the doors. We've been actively recruiting and we're getting the applications in. But again, Dr. Bowen and I just want to stress that we feel it's not the licensing, it's not the reimbursement as much it is making sure we can recruit the professionals that are needed to run that center in time to open. So we'll continue to keep you updated on that as well. And again, thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? Yes, please.
What's, why is the licensing delayed so long?
You know, to be honest, I'm not sure they just, the Department of Health said the quickest we can get you a license is June 1st. I can try to get more clarification on that if you like.
I would appreciate that. And have you, I'm assuming that you've done this, but you've talked to everybody you can to try to push on that? I mean, that's
Yeah, and again
Huge service that we need in this community and a licensing issue seems
Right. And again, lining up the recruitment of the 21 needed staff in addition to the licensing and the fact that we're already in March, we didn't see it as too big of a misalignment, actually, just because of all the many parts.
Okay, so what you're really saying also is that you wouldn't have the 21 professionals recruited potentially by the
We don't believe we're going to be able to at that point, but we'll see.
So that kind of leads into my next question, which is, what are the challenges you're facing with recruiting those 21? Actually, 31 folks could be fully staffed, right?
Yes, 31 total, but a lot of those will be support staff. So the 21 are really talking about psychiatric nurse practitioners. There's not, there's not that many in this, in this country to recruit for that. We're going to be using psychiatrists. We have to have psychiatrists involved. We'll probably be contracting for the psychiatrist and have them using technology to provide that services. We also are recruiting for nurses, we're recruiting for MAs. So there's a lot of behavioral health specialists and therapists. And so those are the ones, those licensed positions, there's just a shortage all over the country and specifically in the state of New Mexico. So those are probably the biggest reason, just the shortage of healthcare professionals.
So part of what we need to do, it's incumbent upon us to make it attractive for people because also the hospitals in a similar situation, they have a lot of recruiting to do it.
Correct.
So we need to work on making Grant County as attractive as possible.
Absolutely. And obviously, there's going to be a little bit of competition. Who's going to recruit that nurse, the hospital or Tucasa? But there's not a lot of nurses that have that substance abuse background, so we have to provide a lot of training on the front end for those nurses that are interested in that type of work.
Does the nursing program at Western provide substance abuse specialty for nurses?
They do. They have a program there. I'm not real familiar with it. I know Mr. Jim Howard, also a professor, or not professor, but instructor for that program up there. They do. I don't know what the graduation, graduation rates are, excuse me. But Dr. Bowen can get more information on that if we need it. Yeah.
Thank you, Dan.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Thanks.
All right, thank you.
Thanks much. Appreciate your attendance and your patience with us today.
Thank you, Mr. Trump.
Let's go back to agenda item number five, the minutes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move to approve the February 13th, 2018 special meeting minutes, February 13th, 2018 work session minutes and the February 15th regular meeting minutes.
Second. Any discussion?
I'm just pleased that we approved the minutes of a meeting that was canceled. If we do, then fine.
We just have to make it count. And we'll do it just in a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. Minutes approved. Item number seven, financial report. Approved report is approved, March 2nd, 2018 expenditure report is presented at the work session.
Mr. Chair, I approve item B.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Agenda item G, I think. Approve or disapprove the 2018 volunteer firefighters annual reporting for public employees, what?
H-18.
Oh, I've got the wrong agenda. We changed it. Thank you. Oh, okay, yeah. Same, same one. It's just I made. Approve or disapprove the 2018 volunteer firefighters annual reporting for the Public Employees Retirement Association? How do you say that?
Per.
Per?
Per.
Okay. For Clefila, Fort Bear, lower members, Pino Santos, Santa Rita, Sapio Creek, Tyrone, upper members, Whiskey Creek.
Move to approve?
Second. All in favor? Oh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. Approve or disapprove your reappointment of the Lodgerish Tax Advisory Board?
Chair, I approve that we reappoint Mr. Broden. It's this entire list?
Yeah, I think so, yes.
Yeah, I was thinking of John, was it that? Okay. Becky O'Connell, John Rehobig, Michael Byer, absolutely, David Shur, and Douglas Dimon to the Lodgerish Tax Advisory Committee for the
Second. All in favor? Or any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item, agenda item, aye.
I don't know if you've discussed it.
Approve or disapprove? Oh, wait a minute. Jeez. Okay, sorry about this. Agenda item J, approve or disapprove the appointment of nine individuals to the Tucasa Advisory Board?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
To make this a little easier, I'd like to take and take the ones that do not have any competition and go ahead and get them approved. So I would move to appoint Dr. Bowen, Dr. Nelson, Deborah Cuckingham, and Alicia Edwards.
Tucasa Advisory Board?
Yes.
And what term?
Wow, can we do the terms after?
Do the term after.
Okay.
Do we need to set the terms or can we ask the
I think we asked it tomorrow. I agree. I think the board should discuss that issue. We don't necessarily know everybody's individual plans and interests.
And what do you think about that?
That's fine, as long as we have followed the three-year plan.
Yeah, we could even ask the board to come back to us and we can make a decision about terms and we can ratify that.
Okay.
So just appointment without terms at this
No, on my preference.
Is there a second to the
I think so.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so discussion?
Can we just go through and nominate someone to get out that we really want on the floor?
Well, let's get these done and then
Okay, so with a, with a motion on the floor, the question I have, and it's just a question I have in preference, is the one, and actually, if you don't mind, so that I don't just blurt out everyone's name.
Just pick
I have assigned a number to each one of these candidates and I'd like to talk. I think we may want to discuss them, so if I could give that
Point of order. We have a motion on the floor to approve the first one.
Should we do
Yeah, and if we just get that done, then we can move
We're just talking about the ones that we don't have the decisions
I have a question about that. So, so my question is about the peer consumer, who is the only applicant there. And so we're going back out for another peer consumer applicant. If we get two or three of them, would we reconsider this one or do we automatically appoint today?
I think this one was on time and I think that should be appointed.
Okay, that was my question. Like I said, I have no
We would just advertise this, this second position.
So any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So those four are pointed. Now for discussion, the process going forward, I have assigned a number to each one of these candidates. Would it be okay if I pass this out to you?
Okay. One through nine.
Yes, just one through nine.
With number eight having withdrawn.
Number eight, nine was dropped. Yes, very good. Okay, so what's the preference? Admiral suggested
There's, you know, a couple of different ways. In the past, we've made motions for your nominees, like four at a time, whoever, I've talked to a few of you, and it sounds and it sounds like another idea is to use this form that Bernadette has provided to you, where if you want to circle your top four, then I could go through and see who has those circles.
Well, here's the bottom line. I want a process that all five of us are comfortable with, so let's discuss the process, and I think that's one idea that Abby and I talked about.
So, you could either make just a random motions, or you could do the circle thing, or maybe other ideas.
Or another idea is each one of us can nominate someone. Okay, check to see if that's the one.
Yeah, okay. And going back to process, I would actually love to hear some people's thoughts about individuals on this list. Uh, so, just to circle and compile, I think the prize may have your own insight into these applicants. I mean, I know some of them, but I certainly don't know all of them.
Chair, I don't mind starting.
Or do you want to just have a discussion first?
Yeah, so that's exactly what I'm talking about, is a discussion.
And then, after you discuss, you can...
So, I'm a little apprehensive to throw out names, and would it be okay if I referred to these by number?
If you would like it.
I mean, it's all public.
Yeah, I mean, everybody's going to know.
Well, I think the public record is that when we appoint this board, we're going to go...
Right here is public record.
Yeah, I believe when people apply for employment from the commission, they have their names. You have to, of course, decide how to be judicious in your preference.
And what I also look at more than anything are people that have already helped through the process and know a lot about Tucasa already. And that's what I was kind of referring my references to, because we, for example, I mean, I know Susie Trujillo was one of the founders with Commissioner Hall when this first started way back when, because we're running in circles in Santa Fe trying to get things approved. And being that it's subdued to them, I'd like to see both of them on that board. As far as others, I think Michael Carrillo's also...
Who were those two, right?
That was Commissioner, past Commissioner Hall, and Ms. Susie Trujillo. And also, I know that our very own Michael Carrillo was very involved, and Sylvia Madrid was very involved. So, those were the ones that I was going to nominate, and we'll take it from there.
So, if we have a process where, as Mr. Ron was just about, if each of us take a turn doing that, is that... Would that constitute...
I would love that.
Okay. Um, then, Commissioner Redd?
Well, Dr. Redd.
Oh, Redd.
I'm very on line with Gabriel, as far as the people that have worked very hard to get this, um, up and running. Commissioner Hall absolutely has to be on it. Susie was second. Mike Carrillo worked tirelessly, because of all these people that are going to be helped by Tucasa are being currently sent to the detention center or the hospital, and that's what we want to stop by doing this. The only variation I have from Gabriel is, because pharmacy's kind of near and near to my heart right now, I think maybe Ray Goldner might be a good candidate, simply because of his pharmacy background. So, that's that would be my four and why.
Commissioner Ron, what's your fourth one that you...
Sylvia Madrid.
Sylvia.
Commissioner Edwards.
So, I would just say that, um, uh, I'm in alignment with the nominees that Commissioner Ron was making. I do have a question about, and this does not have anything to do with how much people have given already to make this happen, because obviously, there are people on this list who have given hours and hours and hours and hours of their time and efforts to make this happen. But it occurs to me that maybe, there might be some value to appointing people that were not involved in the creation of it, having been involved in an organization where I did both the creation of something and then the beyond. I wonder if there is some value into having people, a couple of folks on the Advisory Board that were not involved, and that were a different perspective, a new perspective. That's just a comment.
Right, so do you have somebody else?
Well, I was thinking, um, I was actually considering Michael Carrillo, Sylvia Madrid. See, and I got into all kinds of trouble here, because I want five. I can't stop saying this. So, Michael Carrillo, Ron Hall, Sylvia Madrid, and Emily Pollan. And one of the things that I thought was interesting about the application of Emily Pollan is that she will bring a very different perspective to the board than anybody else. She's not involved in the medical field, she's, but has other attributes that I think would make her a strong candidate, so.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Redd.
Thanks, and I do appreciate this process, partly because I don't know Sylvia Madrid, but a number of you have mentioned her, and she was on the question mark for the resume list, probably. I completely agree with Ron Hall. I had Susie Trujillo second as well, and Michael Carrillo was third. For the most part, I think most of us heard me on the top three. And I agree, I was very intrigued with Miss Pollan's application, and I've gotten to know her a little bit. She's extraordinarily bright and energetic. She would be completely new, respected. So, I was going to make exactly the same question your way, the value of new blood, not well informed about the history of the institution versus people who put a lot of time... No one's mentioned Krista Wolf, but she's also put a lot of time into this. So, for me, slot four was the question.
Just for conversation also, can we extend the board with two more? Because I feel we kind of owe it to some of these people that really started with this program, because I think their hearts are with it.
We made the board. We can do whatever we want.
Um, please, Ms. President, right now you've adopted or approved a, I believe you called it bylaws, I think Stan's not here, that has set out at number one, number two. You need to go back and amend that. So, at this time, I would recommend that you move forward with the numbers that you've already approved under this bylaws, and then at a later time.
Because if we're all pretty much agreeing on the top six, I mean...
I'm a rock man. So, we just heard from Mr. Otero that they've put off the opening date a few months. I wonder if it would make sense maybe to table this discussion to the next meeting in lieu of having some discussion about whether we wanted to change the number of people on the board, et cetera. I don't know. Does that make sense at all?
Yeah, and the alternative that I was moving towards was going in and approving this, and then considering an amendment to what they call a bylaws or something else, even at the next meeting. But that way, we would at least have completed this item.
My curiosity would be to whether they want, this board might want to meet preliminary to the opening of Tucasa and get things going.
Get the board on?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, also, I'm sure Dan probably hasn't been put on, you know, the number of...
Yeah, I wouldn't want to change the numbers today.
I suggest that we continue with this agenda.
Okay, I would change it.
So, that's the one, Ron.
So, am I... So, we've had comment from everyone?
Well, that's what I haven't put out, my title.
Oh, yeah.
My title, where I came out with all this, actually was Sylvia as my number four, despite my interest in getting new blood on there.
I don't have a pen, so...
Well, moving on, the same as Dave.
Okay, so, um, mine were Commissioner Hall, that's why I think all five of us have expressed a preference there. So, my guess is he'd be one of those. Certainly, Michael Carrillo. Um, sorry. Wow, okay, here we go. Susie Trujillo and Sylvia Madrid.
There's three.
I think we've got four here. Probably higher than everybody else.
Do four shake it out, and then go with mine?
Let's see, we have Susie Trujillo, Mike Carrillo, President Hall, I'm sorry, Ron Hall, and then Sylvia Madrid. Is that two of them?
Right, so I have Michael Carrillo, Ron Hall, Sylvia Madrid, and Susie Trujillo, is that?
That's what Dave and I had as well.
Okay.
So, they get their way.
So, is there... Are we ready for a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to go ahead and make the motion that we accept Mr. Michael Carrillo, Mr. Ron Hall, Ms. Sylvia Madrid, and Ms. Susie Trujillo to the Tucasa Advisory Board. A second, I wish.
Uh, any discussion? Friday?
I'd just like to say, I mean, there's a lot of good people that really were interested, and I would like to see us work on that, on the policies, and see if we can add two more to the board in the near future.
So, two remaining issues are, one, terms, correct? That you'd like that to come back before you discuss?
Well, we need to finish the motion on the floor.
I was just there, right there.
Okay.
I would actually like the board to make the decision, the Advisory Board to make the decision on the terms.
Okay.
But then to report back to us.
Right. And then, the other issue was whether you amend the bylaws.
Okay. So, those were requests by individual commissioners. I think we need to consider that after we've considered the question on the floor. Okay, so, the question on the floor, did it... Give a second, sorry.
Just a second.
Okay.
A second?
Oh, oh, yes, discussion.
So, I'm not sure it's really discussion, but I just want to follow up on, um, on the level of interest in this board was fantastic. I just, I was amazed that this many people were interested, and very thankful that this many people applied, and just really wanted to acknowledge the quality of applicants, and thank all the people that had spent so much time on making this a reality. And I would have appointed them all if I could, so.
Any further discussion? For the appointment of Michael Carrillo, Ron Hall, Sylvia Madrid, and Susie Trujillo, that's the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Now, did, we want to have some further discussion. Did you get your questions answered?
Um, yes, Mr. Chairman, and I'm just following up with you all, just so I, for my thoughts, so I could pass it on to this one, the county manager, so that she knows what you would like to see this issue.
So, Mr. Ron was expressed that we might want to make the board larger, and what was the other one?
Uh, it was that you would like the Advisory Board to make the decision as to who gets what terms.
Okay, and is everyone comfortable with that?
And we'd also like, I think, some input from Mr. Otero as to the size of the board.
Definitely, yeah. I'm guessing a larger board might be less manageable, and harder to get a floor.
I think that's good.
Okay. Uh, agenda, item, okay, approve or disapprove the appointment of three road abandonment committee members?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I move to appoint Ty Days, Lauren Frost, and Debbie Rogers to the road abandonment committee.
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Agenda item L, approve or disapprove law enforcement protection fund.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the law enforcement protection fund 2018, 2019.
Application.
Application.
A second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Uh, agenda item M, approve or disapprove consent for right of entry regarding the proposed Boston Hill Mining District Safeguard Project.
Mr. Chairman, I approve that we approve consent for the right of entry regarding the proposed Boston Hill Mining District Safeguard Project.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Uh, item number nine, resolutions. We have resolution N and O. Would we like to consider those together? And if so, then we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I approve that we approve resolutions number R-1806 and resolution number R-1807.
A second.
Mr. Chairman, is there another giving lead, yeah?
Yeah, sure, thank you. Sure, go ahead, thank you.
I'll read this since I made the motion. Uh, resolution number R-1806, a resolution authorizing submission of an application for airport aid to the Federal Aviation Administration, obligation of sponsor matching funds, and authorizing to accept the resulting grant offers and execution of contract documents for the following project. Prepare preliminary engineering report evaluating the commercial service terminal and GA aprons rehabilitation and repairs at the Grant County Air Force, Grant County Silver City Airport. The second one for your consideration is resolution number R-1807, a resolution authorizing submission of an application for airport aid to the Federal Aviation Administration, obligation of sponsor matching funds, and authorizing to accept the resulting grant offers and execution of contract documents for the following project. Prepare preliminary engineering report evaluating the commercial service terminal code compliance, rehabilitation, and repairs at the Grant County Silver City Airport.
So, the only difference in those two is one is for terminal and GA aprons, and I'm sorry, what is GA?
General Aviation.
Oh, thank you. General Aviation Aprons Rehabilitation and Repair. And the other one is for code compliance, rehabilitation and repair.
Something else?
Terminal code compliance.
Aprons on the area adjacent to the runway, correct?
Sorry, might be taxiway aprons. It's between the runway and the terminal.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, agenda item 10, recesses Grant County Board of Commissioners and reconvene, oh, sorry, and convene as the Grant County Health Claims Board.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I move to recess the Grant County Board of Commissioners.
Second.
All in... Any discussion? All in favor?
No discussion on that one.
Oh, okay, thank you. And why is that?
There's no discussion on recessing or adjourning or table.
Thank you. I should have learned that 30 years ago.
We have a little...
Yeah.
Or you can just look up online, too.
No, that would be good, thanks. Call to order the Grant County Health Claims Board for the business item O, agenda item O, approve or disapprove the February 2018 health...
It's P now.
P. I thought I was wrong, P. Approve or disapprove the February 2018 health claims indigestion fund in the amount of $10,303.08.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the February 2018 health claims amount of $10,303.08.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, I move we adjourn the Grant County Health Claims Board.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, call to order the Grant County Board of Commissioners meeting, reconvene. I don't know how to say that.
I miss that's banging.
Uh, what's that?
I miss that's banging.
Maybe we should do it like that.
So, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
During county elected official reports, if it would please the commission, I think Ms. Arias brought us a document that the board trustees passed yesterday. I think she wants to give it to us.
Is that correct?
Yeah.
Oh, very good. So, that can happen while we're listening to...
Yeah.
...the report?
I didn't know if she had anything to say about it, but she's kind of a county enemy.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Six copies, right?
Sure, that's great, thank you. She's not going to read it?
Uh, no, thanks, sir.
Thank you.
She's going to give us the first.
I know Charlene wants one.
Madam Kirk, would you like to go first with you?
I have my group one.
Okay, I'm going to give that to the...
Sure.
Uh, Chair, be in the well.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have the report. I just wanted to say, business as usual at the office. We've been keeping up with our workload. The only thing I want to say is I want to thank the staff for continuing to work and provide the excellent service they're providing out there to the citizens of Grant County. I'm very proud of the staff that I have, and I just want to acknowledge that. And other than that, I have nothing else to report unless you have any questions. And other than that, I have nothing else to report unless you have any questions.
Any questions?
I just want to congratulate you on your latest election, your job.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
And wear your two hats.
Yes, thank you. Yes, sir, congratulations. Thank you. Mr. Carrillo?
Uh, General Board members, once again, I would like to start off, congratulations to all the municipalities that ran, Silver City, Hurley, Verde, Santa Clara, and congratulations on all of them. Uh, for starters, I would like to thank my employees in the assessor's office. They make my job very tranquil. Um, let me just say, I'm so glad that they're so passionate helping out our, our property owners the way they do. Uh, I do have a interview today out of the Reappraisal Fund. We're going to be interviewing for a temporary appraiser's position this afternoon. I have a pretty full agenda today, and, um, so that's going to be today, this afternoon. I do want to thank the commission about when, Tuesday on the work session, for you guys to interact about the parcel corrections. And, uh, I'm looking forward to meeting with the county manager. Uh, she understands the, the magnitude and the situation about what's going on about correcting these parcels. And I do, like I said, I do thank you for you guys interacting. Um, and I am looking forward to meeting with Sharno. On the 14th of March, we're actually going to have a pictometry. And what that is, on March 14, 2018, from 1:00 to 2:30 here at the chambers, they're going to be talking about pictometry, imagery, application for Grant County, and all other New Mexico agencies. Uh, it's going to help out the assessors, appraisers, uh, community planning, environment assessments, and development, law enforcement, uh, fire department, E-911, and, uh, engineering, transportation, and utilities. Uh, please contact the assessor's office, uh, so we can put you on the list. Uh, the public is invited, and I consider it's just going to be a presentation about pictometry. Uh, this week, uh, we actually got our evaluate, we actually got evaluated in the assessor's office for our annual evaluation for the Property Tax Division, and, uh, it went very satisfactory. We were the first ones to be evaluated. Uh, they like doing that because, uh, we make it very easy for them. Uh, we have all our information ready for Property Tax Division, and I will come up with the, the results, uh, pretty soon. Uh, April 2nd, we're actually going to mail out the notices of valuation, and that's, uh, we usually mail them out on the 1st of April. However, it's going to be on the 2nd because it falls on a Sunday. Please, ladies and gentlemen, look at that document. The important document when it comes to do with your property, valuation, assessment, land values, any exemptions, valuation freeze, it does give you a breakdown of last year's value, this year's value, estimated tax, very important document, April 2nd, we will be mailing out. Uh, we did meet with the Trails Group, if you guys want me to interject on that one because, uh, it was a very lengthy, um, meeting, and thanks to Misha, he was there, he gave his input, and thank you very much, Misha. You were very informative and, uh, about the I C plan and everything, so thank you very much. Um, we actually met on the 2nd of March. Uh, we missed you, Harry, Alicia, but it was a very good meeting, and, uh, everybody voted on, on the funding that was left, so I'm very excited about that because we're going to continue to do this, and it's going to be a lot of fun.
Do you want to talk about the conclusions?
I can't do that. Uh, not, not yet. We actually voted on the projects, and, uh, there was, uh, it was a pretty good, pretty good vote, and, uh, I guess Ron Troy is going to come out with that information.
Mr. Spencer?
Yes, sir.
Wasn't that the meeting where Harry and Alicia were elect the chairman and vice chairman?
You know what? Thank you very much. Alicia is the chairman, and Harry is going to be the vice chairman.
Yeah, I thought that's how it came.
I just love that. Thank you there, Commissioner Caston. However, that went on, and, uh, I think it was very positive, and I think we're going to continue, uh, with the funding, and once again, Misha, thanks a lot. Uh, sorry that I was a little late. Uh, I did finish my last show on K U R U due to FCC standards. I won't be able to be on the radio from now until November. Uh, it was a little sad, but, um, thanks to Linda Amos Smith, and I congratulate her being our town council, and I hope that a commissioner too can be showing up for the government portion of it. Uh, I really enjoyed, uh, do, I really enjoyed, uh, doing it. Uh, gives the, the public informed, and, uh, I just really enjoyed everything that goes on. I will be, uh, signing up March 13 to, uh, my fourth go around as the county assessor, and, uh, been there for 37 years. I'm very excited about doing it. Uh, it seems like when the political year, the flag goes, and I'm off the gate, and, uh, and I just don't, I just don't stop. I really enjoy it. And I enjoy you people for, uh, carrying everything here in this county. Thank you very much. I stand for questions.
Any questions? Thank you. Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. Um, right now, we stand at 63.58 collection rate for the 2017 taxes, so we've collected a total of 3. almost $8 million so far for the 8, 17 taxes, and we still have about 2.2 to collect. Um, during the last not quite month, from, from the 14th of February to the 7th of March, we've collected 52,955.68 for the, for the county, and 1.3 million for overall for every, all the entities that we collect revenues for. Um, we've stayed steady in the office, uh, people, while it's a little slow, people have taken vacations for different reasons. Liz has had eye surgery during her last couple of weeks. She's bounding back, and she's plugging away, and Vanji's out supporting Silver High with a basketball tournament this week, so, um, maybe we just keep plugging away, so, um, I just wanted to make a couple of comments. I came to listen to the, uh, presentation by, uh, the gentleman for the bonding issues and stuff like that, and, um, I just want to put a little bit of caution, and I, I believe he's a little optimistic about what our, um, excess is. Um, we, we still have some bonds that we have to pay out, uh, and, and if you'll notice on the report, the total coming in, and it's been the total that's been coming in for several months, I mean, several years, is about $740,000 for debt service. So, we don't, even though our, um, rates are maxed out, because for whatever reason, we are only getting about $740,000 coming in to the debt service account. So, we have, we do have right now about $400 and some thousand dollars a month payments to make that's going to continue through 2023. So, we, we do have a little flexibility, a little, and, and you had asked about maybe going for $12 million rather than $6 million. Um, my caution would be, rather than getting that big of a, of a bond issue, first of all, the negativity from the community, that, that may be just too much, but the last bond issue that we did, we had $6 million that came in. We're still four years out, haven't expended completely that $6 million. There's still about $500,000 in, in the, in the pot, if you want to say, for the projects that we have that still are still ongoing. So, and it takes that long because of the planning process and everything, all the things that have to be, you know, done, and, and, uh, I'm not saying not go for a bond. I definitely think that we should, if you have projects in mind that you want to do, but I don't think, because of the complexity and the requirements on the staff to try to get all the, you know, the, the actual, uh, projects online and, and coming in, and, you know, they take time, and, and I think we just stand a better chance of getting approval for, say, $6 million as they propose every two years. I don't, I don't really look at, or I wouldn't consider doing the payoff early because that would deplete our funds in the debt service account, which is dwindling anyways. It's not what it used to be. Uh, I don't know why the reason is, that we used to get over a million dollars, but right now, for the last four or five years, it's only been $740,000 approximately. So, you know, that's just my input, and if you have any questions or anything, I'm...
So, I think we should get together with Mr. Valenzuela and go over some of these questions. The, the way he presented it, the idea of paying down the remaining debt on the 2009 bond, uh, was to, uh, sort of stave off the DFA from reducing our mill rates as a result of having too much money in the debt service fund that they maintain. That's the way he explained it, and if we want to avoid a situation where our mill rates get cut and then have to be raised again, that we should pay off, we should use that excess, what he considers an excess amount of money, uh, to pay down the debt so that we can start again. That, that was the key advantage, uh, because it's, I think, easier to understand, and it's certainly politically easier to explain, uh, a level tax rate rather than going down and then having to come back up again. Uh, and, and so if you don't see the same issue with excess money and with the threat that the DFA is going to cut our mill rates as a result, then we need to work out that situation.
Well, uh, the, what, the side that, that I'm looking at, we just paid off one issue. That's why our payments are less.
Yeah.
So, that's why he's coming up with that excess. But in reality, what we're paying out was coming in. It's, it's not like there's a lot of, you know, fluff there.
So, you don't see a threat from the DFA?
I don't. If we, if you move now to pass a new bond issue.
Okay.
Not necessarily to pay down, because to me, that, the reasoning in the past for having that excess was not necessarily to pay down early, but in case anything happens with the economy and our revenues for debt service drop any further, then you have that cushion to continue making your payments on the bond issues without worrying about where are we going to get the money. I mean, that's, that's, to me, that was the logic for having that, and it's just enough cushion where DFA, as far as we understand, will not mess with us, but the, the problem is that we just paid in 2017 off a bond issue.
Yeah.
So, we have less debt to pay back. I mean, if we can get this turned back on, another $6 million in bonds out there for, for projects that you guys would have, uh, I think we would, we would, we wouldn't be bothered by DFA for, for, because we have the bonds.
I'll get back with Mr. Valenzuela to make sure I understand both versions of the situation, and the other thing was, I just wanted to clarify, my suggestion about 12 million wasn't versus only 6 million. It was versus his suggestion that we do a $6 million request now, and then another $6 million request two years hence. And so my question was, you know, why split it up in two different elections? I think he had a good answer for that question, but I liked his answer. Uh, but it wasn't that I was proposing a ton of more debt than he was suggesting.
Right. Any other comments? So, thank you for those comments. I think, uh, I think there needs to be some follow-up with what you were saying with Mr. Valenzuela, the county manager, and some of us, or all of us could be in on that discussion to get, uh, that resolved so that we're fully prepared to go forward with the live interview. Thank you. Is that all the, uh, the elected official reports? Thank you. Um, commissioner reports, you'd like to go first. Commissioner Edwards, would you?
I don't have anything today, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Ron?
I just want to say congratulations to, to Mr. Valenzuela and, and all the people that ran, because it takes guts to get out there, put your name out there, and actually run for an office. And especially thank you to all the people that did win, and congratulations to all, and, uh, hopefully, you know, it's, it's all that it was cut out for. And that, that's pretty much all we've got for the day.
Commissioner, sure.
Uh, first, I'm going to plug for politician one supporting. Uh, I'm heading to Albuquerque tomorrow night for the convention, pre-fairly convention for the Democratic primary, uh, and I will be supporting Michelle LeVine-Grisson for governor, and Aaron Helen Morales for lieutenant governor, uh, Shochi Torres Small, uh, for Congressional District Two, and, um, Bill McMillan of Los Cruces for state auditor, and Garrett Deniklaus for the state land office. So, anybody who wants to know what I'll be doing up there at the convention, those are my votes. And I also wanted to mention, uh, it has been mentioned earlier, that there's both a rally and a meeting today related to the Hollerment proposal. The rally's at noon at the convention center, the meeting's at 1:00 at the convention center, and both will be streamed by Hila Members Community Radio, uh, so you can go to their website and, and check that out. I'm not sure what their turnaround will be, but they'll be streamed if you can't make it. And, uh, I don't know if you all saw what I considered a, a very good op-ed, uh, opinion column in the Daily Press by Mr. Jim Lee of Hanover, uh, and he addressed, I thought quite well, the question of whether this commission, uh, has any relevance, uh, in this debate, and he came out on the side that, uh, that we heard a couple speakers earlier suggest that it may be the case the Air Force won't listen to us, but I do think our delegation will listen to us, and the Air Force will listen to our delegation. So, I hope we don't give up. I hope we continue to press with some statement of our position on the overflight proposal. Thanks very much.
And Ms. Dadd, who was that in the press?
Jim Lee. It was just yesterday afternoon's, uh, March Daily Press. Yeah, March, sure.
Anything? Yes?
I did have one other thing. Um, on Sunday, we are having a dardial for our very own Senator Harry Morales, our lieutenant governor campaign, and that will be from 5:00 to 9:00 o'clock on Sunday, the 11th, and we welcome everyone. We're going to have the fabulous W N M U Mariachi, the Plata group there, and they will be playing for the first hour, and then we'll have our Illusions band from Grant County playing for the rest of the time. So, we, we welcome everyone. I'd like to see everyone rally behind our, our very own senator to, uh, to become a lieutenant governor and, and, uh, see some great things out of him. So, thank you very much. That's all I've got.
Thank you. Commissioner Caston?
Well, normally, you know, I'm the one that's usually short on these things, but, uh, the GRMC trustee have passed a position statement, uh, and, and there's no argument that, that Ms. Arias has, has done a complete, uh, great job in giving this place back to where it, where it's manageable, uh, and their position statement spends a lot of time talking about that. Um, and it, it does talk about the board of trustees being committed to, to fill their fiduciary responsibilities, and I completely agree with that. They need to do that. Uh, the last statement here is, therefore, the board of trustees is now recommending strongly that the Hila Regional Medical Center continue to remain an independent county-owned regional hospital, uh, serving the healthcare needs for our communities. And I just had a statement of, of, on that, uh, concerning the Hila Regional Board of Trustees position paper. You know, it came, no surprise to me that the board of trustees chose this course to action. However, the timing of the action did surprise me. Um, this came just as the board of county commissioners and the board of trustees and doctors were beginning to have thoughtful, important discussions, uh, starting to schedule site visits and attending presentations to determine the future of our healthcare for Grant County. This decision was made prior to even knowing everyone who may be interested in partnering with Grant, with GRMC or even seeing one presentation. The decision was so important to them that it couldn't even wait until their regular board meeting at the end of the month. This reminds me of the world-renowned philosopher, Hagar the Horrible. As in usual fashion, a car change strip, there's three frames. In the first frame, Helga, Hagar's wife, is seen answering the door and calling to Hagar, alerting him that there was a salesman to see him. In the second frame, Hagar is seen dressed in full battle regalia, holding his sword. His caption was to read, "I have no time for a crazy salesman today. I have a battle to fight." In the third frame, there stands a salesman with a briefcase looking totally stunned, holding a machine gun that he had for sale. They have made a decision without all the information that would and could be They have made a decision without all the information that would and could be available to them. I knew their desire to remain as the last county-owned hospital in New Mexico. Even with all the obstacles in their way to do so, I knew they had that desire. I even admired their resolve to remain independent. However, they continually relayed to me that they could remain open-minded throughout the process of evaluation. That all changed yesterday with unanimous vote from the board of trustees to ratify the position paper that states they want to remain a county-owned hospital. The county will continue exploring the options presented to them from various potential partners, and will continue to inform the public from time to time as new, as new information becomes available. Who knows? At the end of this process, we may agree with them. It's very possible. We may not. So at this time, the new information I have for you is that a couple of potential partners have visited the Gila Regional Medical Center facility to get an idea of the layout and condition of the physical plant and the amount and, and, uh, condition of equipment. We're anticipating site visits, presentations, and reverse site visits to be scheduled in late March and April. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, try to keep my comments brief. Uh, I wasn't planning on talking about the, the bond issue, but, uh, relative to that, I've expressed my concern to the county manager that, as, that we have a process to determine if there are any needs before we commit to spending more taxpayer dollars. She assured me that, that is in place, and, and I was glad to hear that the asset management plan, uh, that's being developed as part of that, that Mr. Larras has been working on that with her, and that it's not just going to be, uh, hey, we can buy this, or hey, we can buy that. It's, uh, it'll be actually, uh, management, uh, led, management-driven with, uh, and it'll be a process. And so I'm, I'm glad to hear about that. So, um, related to that, the asset, a big part of the asset management plan is the seven hundred miles of roads that we have in Grant County. Uh, I'm guessing a disproportionate number of those are in my district, or you guys are getting a lot of calls. So, because I'm getting a lot of calls. And so the process seems to be, in the year plus I've been on the commission, that the roads that get fixed are those that, who, where the community rallies together and makes the biggest squawk. Uh, maybe those are the roads that need fixing. I don't know, but I'd like to see a process, and I hope this asset management plan can, can help us instead of just, uh, when somebody yells "fire" or, in this case, "road," we run out and fix their road. We'd actually have a process where we knew what roads needed fixing, and it'd be more equitable. And I think that, um, I think that, uh, I'm, I'm not, I don't like taxes, and I don't like spending the public's money, but, um, I think the, the people who live on dirt roads, uh, they're in such a deteriorated condition, I think they would support a bond if they knew that the money was going to be spent wisely on their road and will be working towards that, uh, on their roads and, and other necessary, uh, items that the, the manager comes up with. Yeah, so I just, really briefly, uh, I'd like to acknowledge the airport manager, and the county manager, and the, and the other staff who aren't here, and whoever, including Boutique Airlines for the service they offered to Grant County in twenty-seventeen. And I just want to be on record as saying, I hope we get that same service, you know, all of twenty-eighteen. Uh, it's critical, uh, for, uh, regular, dependable, uh, service in the county. And again, I think sometimes the loudest wheel squeaking gets, uh, the service. And I want Grant County to squeak loud so that boutique continues the service we got in twenty-eighteen where we had eleven thousand, I think, implantments. We need to have, uh, ten thousand implantments this year in order to get significant federal funding, uh, to, uh, do improvements, needed improvements at the airport. And the way to do that is to continue, uh, with the, the, uh, no cancellation, the fewest cancellations we can have and the fewest, um, sorry.
Delay departures?
Delay departures, because a delayed departure is just as serious as a cancellation, if you miss your connecting flight or you're meeting you're going to. And what happens is, if, if we are having cancellations, if we start having those cancellations or the delayed departures, then people who are using the service will decide, "Oh, I missed my meeting. I missed my connection. I have to drive next time." It's a five-hour drive to Alpharetta here, more or less the same to Phoenix, and we, if we can't depend on the service, we'll start driving. Uh, implant, implantments are going to go down, and I don't want to create our own depression here. I just want to say we expect the same service in twenty-eighteen as we got in twenty-seventeen, and, and that'll be a, a topic I think we need to, it's something we need to follow really careful, I think, and expect the manager in the airport to, uh, brief us on these regularly. I've got several requests of information that I'd like to see regularly on this so that we can make sure that, uh, we get the ten thousand implantments this year, and people in this county can, uh, come and go, and, uh, I think I've overspoke on that. Okay, so any other comments before the question? Yes?
I just want to remind you all that you're going to have pictures at eleven-thirty, so it's good timing to close it down, and elected officials as well.
Chairman, we're going into executive session.
Oh, huh, you're right. So how about we, can we do, can we do the pictures and then go into executive session?
Would that be enough?
Why don't we take, why don't we take Mr. Caston's idea and one by one, maybe start from that.
Are you doing individual? Is that how?
We're doing a group picture. Oh.
I don't know. Are we doing a group picture?
Okay, well, since you're here... Since you're here, why don't, if it's okay, uh, we could do that and then go into executive session?
That sounds fine with me.
Okay. Uh, so is there, do we need a motion to take our pictures?
So we are adjourning and then recessing, I mean, and then we are re, 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 re convening in executive session. Then we'll, we'll, we'll go into executive session, and...
So I need a motion to recess to get our pictures taken. And I think, uh, all in favor? Is that word?
I guess so. I was trying to do two at once.
Motion, motion. Call back the word after the photo, non-photo recess, the, uh, Board of, uh, Grant County Board of Commissioners meeting. Mr. Chairman, I move to go into executive session?
Second.
For, would you state the purpose?
Oh, I have an agenda. To continue to sell, uh, disposal of real property.
And we have to quote the, uh, the authority, which is section, sorry. I know it's right here in front of me. Um, you make a scale statutes annotated ten, dash fifteen, dash one, H eight. Uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown, are you aware that you will be entering executive session?
What? Yes, ma'am.
Chair, our vice chair, Edwards, are you aware that you will be entering executive session? Chairman?
Yes, my vote is to in executive session.
Yes.